John, are we all set?
Yeah.
We'll wait for Kelly. Yes. First, I apologize for starting late, but we will make up for it on the back end. And, um, quick hello to everyone in TV land, I'm sure. Joe Norton wishes he was sitting here, maybe, maybe not, but he is, uh, back at home tonight, and I'm sure he's watching. Hello, Joe, and, uh, welcome back. Um, can we get to item number two, accept him to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, and we will move to item number three, meet the applicants.
Actually, under, uh, Agenda Two, Watkins.
Oh, that's right, I didn't see it there. Watkins, do we have any Watkins? Okay, then we will go to number three, meet the applicants. And we'll start with, the first person is Scott Thomas. Scott, you over there, Scott, how are you?
Good.
Good, come on up. We've all seen your application, and really just get a second to put a name with the face, and, uh, ask a few quick questions, and get your feedback. You're, uh, applying for the Renewable Energy Committee, which you've got solid background, obviously, in that field, so...
What I do every day, right?
That's what you do. So, any questions from either of you?
Uh, I do not.
No, Sean, aye? Great, Scott, very active in the community, obviously, you do this sort of stuff, we appreciate you applying.
Great, thank you.
And that committee's done great stuff for the town, you know, with the, um, solar array, and the, and the wind turbines, so, uh, you know, it's a real important committee to the green, uh, impact of the town, so, thank you for applying, and, uh, I guess on item number, at the end, we will, uh, twelve, we'll be appointing the positions, so, if you can catch us on TV. Thanks for coming in, Scott. Next is Maureen Carlberg. Hi, Maureen, how are you?
Hi, Maureen.
Thank you for coming in, you are applying for the Affordable Housing Trust. Great, and we saw you up before for other things, and I know Rick got in touch with you, so, thank you for, uh, continuing to be involved in the town. John, you know a little bit about this?
No, I mean, I, we met before, Ms. Carlberg, when you were applying for conservation, I think you'd be a wonderful addition to the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, as you know, the trust is funded through Community Preservation Act, uh, each year, ten percent of that fund goes towards the Affordable Housing Trust, or at least for affordable housing, of which the trust has been the beneficiary of that, and, um, you know, right now, the trustees, I'm one of them, could certainly use your assistance and help, and, uh, a lot of things are happening, it's a great time to be on the committee, and, or, the trust, rather, and, uh, look forward to you participating.
Thank you for coming up for probably the third time, but, yeah, appreciate the effort, you know.
I'm sorry.
Appreciate the desire to serve for the town, like Tony said, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's great, and you'll be a good, you know, addition to the committee, and, um, another one of the real important things in town, um, that have huge upside with the, the green commitment and the Affordable Housing Commitment, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you. We'll vote on it, on Agenda Item Twelve, so...
And Elizabeth Cranston? Hi, Elizabeth.
Hi.
And you have applied for the Cituit Cultural Council?
Yes.
Thank you. I read you're new in town and want to get involved, and, and certainly a, uh, a good choice, as well as the CPC, I saw you put that second on your list.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Anything, wanted to just tell us a little bit about yourself? I mean, we read it, but you can, and what prompted you to be interested in this?
Uh-huh. Uh, well, I just moved here from California, um, and I'm really interested in just learning as much as I can about Cituit, and figuring out how I can plug into the town, and so, when I saw that there were openings on the committees, I did some research to just see where maybe I could contribute the best. So, my background is in nonprofit fundraising, and I do, professionally, I do grant writing and grant making, so I thought it was a good match for the Cultural Council, since that's the function of it, and, um, I have a passion for the arts, so I thought it would be a good way for me to be able to contribute while also learning a lot from the town.
Great.
So, help y'all consider me.
These are all the right things. Any, any questions, or...
Thank you.
No?
I, I have to say, this is one of the committees that I think has, or councils, as it more appropriately put, um, that has so much upside, you know, there are a number of them, whether it's beautification, this, uh, Affordable Housing Trust, um, Community Preservation Committee, it's just an opportunity to make the town, and accentuate the town, and make it better, and, uh, so I'm very, very pleased that you applied to it, and I hope, um, you can further it along, if you will, uh, in certain directions that it hasn't gone, so I commend you for, for, for applying.
Thanks.
Thanks, and again, number twelve, we'll make the appointments, and...
Great.
We're on Channel Ten. Great, outdoor, uh, item number four, outdoor entertainment permits. The first one is at nineteen Ava's Lane.
Hello.
Tori Murray, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Uh, so, um, my husband and I are planning to have, uh, an outdoor party on the night of August sixth, Saturday, August sixth, so we're here to apply for a permit, um, to get your permission to have a live band. We've checked with our, we've invited all of our neighbors, and, uh, either they're coming, or they're out of town, so, no one has stated any objection, and we've certainly asked them, please let us know if anyone does object to having live music in the neighborhood. And our house, um, backs, the back of our house was where the actual event is going to take place, is, is facing wetlands, so, there's certainly no disruption behind us, and in front of us is, is just our local neighborhood, and we've invited everyone to come and join us.
Great, that's a sure way not to have objections.
Yeah.
Great, and it's just a regular party?
Yeah, it's, uh, uh, yeah, exactly.
Great.
Family, friends.
Any, uh, questions, John?
The only thing that popped out on me, and I'm certainly not going to vote against it, you know, I'll vote for it, but I did see that it's going to be kind of like rock and roll till eleven o'clock at night, the only reason I say it's amplified, so, while I know, I assumed you were on the back end of the Sam Tilden Farm...
That's right.
...is that maybe the other neighborhoods may, being kind of wetlands, may project or carry, so, just be cautious of, you might want to, I mean, if it's an annual event, you might want to be careful, but, you know, I only say that because it is outdoors, but certainly, you know, you're, you're entitled to it, in my mind.
Great, thank you.
And obviously, if someone complains, then you're in here to, to whatever, but I think, uh, it's a Saturday night, right?
Saturday night, yes.
All right, motion?
Sure. Uh, move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the outdoor entertainment permit for nineteen Ava's Lane for Saturday, August sixth, two thousand and eleven, between the hours of seven PM and eleven PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Do you think we can turn that off? Is, do you have the controller there? Thank you. The next one is, um, on one sixty-nine Edward Foster Road.
Um, Breann and Justin?
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi.
If you can just state your name and your address, I should have...
Breon Petit, eighty-seven Green Street, Marblehead, Massachusetts.
Great, and you are looking for?
An entertainment permit for an outdoor wedding reception for Saturday, August thirteenth. Uh, we have a jazz trio playing from four to seven, and a DJ from seven to ten. Um, all of the abutters have been notified and invited, um, and again, those who are in town are coming, so, we've, um, not had any objections from any of the neighbors.
Any questions? Nope. So, the event is a, is it a wedding?
It's a wedding reception.
Wedding reception, and you, I just noticed in your address, you live in Marblehead?
This is at my parents' address here in Cituit.
Great, in the back there?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Um, and it's amplified from four to ten, a wedding reception on Edward Foster Road, I think, that is great.
Can I just ask one question? And I'm all in favor, if that's right, parking, can you get the, is, will it be enough parking?
Yes, we were able to secure parking.
Great, yeah, that'd be, could be a challenge, but no, have fun, that's great.
Motion?
Move the Board's second vote to grant the outdoor entertainment permit for one sixty-nine Edward Foster Road for Saturday, August thirteenth, two thousand and eleven, between the hours of four PM and ten PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Good luck, congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, which is a discussion vote of an inter-fund advanced borrowing, the Town Treasurer. Ms. Lapata, how are you?
I'm good and built, good evening.
Good, thank you.
Um, I've been here many times, uh, for these types of things, this one is a total of one million, one hundred twenty-six thousand dollars for the different capital items, um, that should be on the list that you all got on your, in your packet. The biggest chunk of it is on the, um, Musquashka Pond Project, seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. I just wanted you to know that most likely, we won't spend that much, it's just, I'm in the process of getting an interim loan from the MWPAT, um, which is typically very, very cheap, so, um, I've submitted the questionnaire today to them, so, it's just in case they need the money based on their cash flow submitted to me, and we have to expend the money before that goes through, so...
Great. So, this is, basically, we're borrowing money from ourselves to fund the capital projects that we passed at the town meeting, and allows us to start the projects quicker and, um, complete them quicker. Um, and, I guess we can read through them real quick, it's the meter replacements, the carbon filter replacement, both in the Water Enterprise Fund, SCADA upgrade, not sure what that acronym is, but, again, in water transfer, a Bobcat, which we have a, I assume that's what this lovely picture is of, um, for DPW, um, foreshore protection, road improvements, and the largest one is the Musquashka Pond Sewer.
In some of them, it's just a portion of the total authorization on the projects, it's based on the cash flow needs, um, from the DPW.
Motion?
Sure. Sorry, here we go. I'm going to move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve advanced inter-fund borrowing by the Treasurer Collector.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. Thank you, Jane. And you are here for number six as well.
I am.
Number six is, uh, vacating a foreclosure decree.
Right. As you know, part of my job as, on the Treasurer's side of my hat, is to foreclose on those who don't pay their property taxes, and also, as a tax title custodian, I, I have a role after they've been foreclosed on as well. I have three properties from the same owner that, um, hadn't paid any taxes in several years, and my tax title attorney foreclosed on them this spring. I was approached by the attorney for the former owner, because we are outright the owner now of these three properties, um, and I was approached by the woman's owner, um, and there was an interest to pay the money owed to the town, everything that we've expended, all the taxes, any other fees incurred, um, to the tune of almost two hundred thousand dollars. I spoke at length to my tax title attorney, I spoke to the woman's attorney, obviously, only somebody with a legal interest in a property can redeem it anyway, never mind to ask the foreclosure decree be vacated in land court, um, so I did get that proof, as I had requested, um, so, my recommendation to you, from my tax title attorney, is to allow this to go through, and to, um, what it would mean is my tax title attorney, Jim Coppola of Coppola and Coppola, going back to the land court and telling them that we want to vacate the decree of foreclosure, and allow the people to buy back the three properties, or the woman, actually.
Again, normal course of business, you don't pay your taxes, after a certain period of time, the property becomes foreclosed on, and becomes a property of the town, and then the town typically auctions it off, right? But in this case, their attorneys have come back, and, um, have wanted to purchase those properties, and it's our attorney's opinion that, that they would win in land court, so there's no sense in fighting it.
Exactly.
And they pay all their taxes, all the fees, all the interest, all the, everything that's associated with the debt.
Right.
It's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. The fact that they are in arrears, and they're willing to pay up to date, can we put a condition? Because their right to redeem, I think, is like a year, this is a question I'd ask Coppola, in that saying that during that time period, that they will not, and, obviously, they fell back behind for taxes, that they better not fall be, and once they pay it, then they don't pay their taxes again.
Exactly.
We're going to be right back in the same, same boat, having to then go through the whole process, that's what I'm trying to avoid, at least for purposes of the further duration of the right to redeem, so I don't know if that's a condition they can put in or not.
Absolutely, and I discussed that with him, because that was my concern, and Tricia and I had spoken about it as well, because they hadn't paid taxes in six years, um, they were in tax title for all three properties back to the spring of two thousand and six, for non-payment of two thousand and five taxes. So, what he advised me to do is, as part of this payoff amount for all three properties, to not only include, include all the back taxes, and all the interest through a deadline date, which I think I recommended in the motion to be August fifteenth, I believe, but the FY twelve quarters, one and two taxes for all three properties.
That's fair.
So, yeah, that's...
So, two quarters in...
Right, that's all we've built to date, so we can't build them yet for the actual taxes, but, yeah.
That's fair.
Sean, anything?
Nope.
Motion? Move that the Cituit Board of Selectmen authorize the vacation of the foreclosure decrees granted by land court for the properties located at thirty-three Collier Road, parentheses, MBL number sixty-four dash six dash eight, end of parentheses, Collier Road, parentheses, MBL number sixty-four dash six dash nine, end of parentheses, in twenty-eight Otis Place, again, parentheses, MBL number fifty dash four dash two four, end of parentheses, upon the receipt of full payment, owed to the town of Cituit, as calculated by the Treasurer Collector. The payoff must, strike that, the payoff amount should include the FY or fiscal year twelve, first and second quarter taxes on all three properties, as well as all delinquent taxes, interest fees, et cetera, and should be paid no later than Friday, August twelfth, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Jane, thank you, good work.
Thank you.
Item number seven is the purchase of a new CAT, or C-A-T, two eighty-nine CTL, parentheses, Bobcat. Kevin?
Good evening. Um, in the last town meeting, ninety thousand dollars was appropriated to purchase a Bobcat for use in highway, public rounds, and snow removal. DPW was reviewed and requests that the Board approve this purchase of a CAT two eighty-nine C-L track loader with the attachments for eighty-six, eight ninety-two. I've included some pictures up there, just to show you what the machine looks like. It's a pretty versatile machine, it's a track machine, we'll be able to use it to, uh, set the tide gates on the beach, get out on the beach, um, it's got a bunch of different attachments, one of them is to, um, grind the roads and do repairs to the roadways, and, uh, it, it's also for a trailer to haul around there and bring to different parts of town.
Great. Um, again, appropriated at town meeting, in the amount of ninety thousand dollars, the appropriation is, or the price is eighty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-two.
Just, one quick question, Kevin, it just, you just made me think of it now, can we get a york rake for that, to pick up a small amount of seaweed on beaches where it's sand? I know it's not going to travel over rock very well, but...
Um, I'd have to look at the picture, if it's set up for, for an attachment on the back, I know the counterweight's on the back.
Well, no, it'd be on the front, it's going to...
Oh, the york rake on the front? Yeah, then I, then we, it has...
Capability of doing that.
Yeah, it has a lot of attachment, so it's, it's a possibility. Um, and, one of the things that we are getting on that machine is a, it's a grapple?
Grapple rake?
Yeah, I was going to ask you, what's the grapple rake then?
And it's kind of like a rake, it could be used, it could be used for if there was, say, driftwood or something on the beach, you could come in and pick it up, and the sand all falls underneath, so you're not picking up all the sand. It's not like, it's similar to a york rake, but not really, it couldn't be used as a york rake, but there is a possibility, we could look into something like that for the future.
That's a great idea, we talked, we talked about that.
Yeah, where it has tracks.
Sean, anything?
Motion?
Nope. Yep, motion, please?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the purchase of a new CAT, two eighty-nine CTL, compact track loader, which is a Bobcat to Milton Cat of Milford, Mass, with a total price, including delivery, of eighty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Kevin? Moving on to number eight, which is, uh, discussion vote rescind Hawker Pedders license for Egypt Country Store. How are you?
Fine, thank you, and you?
If you can just state your name and address.
Name and address.
Robert Newsom, I guess, the Egypt Country Store is the Egypt Country Store, sixty-seven Gap and Pierce.
Marshall, Marshall Robert, seventy-five Captain Pierce.
Right. So, we're here, um, because inadvertently, um, we passed a Hawkers Pedders license and a location that we shouldn't have, and the, uh, zoning enforcement officer has told us that there needs to be a variance in order for there to be a Hawkers Peddlers license at that location, so, we are correcting a mistake that we made earlier in, when do we do this? I don't see Dan, uh, June, June twenty-first, maybe?
Seventh, June seventh.
June seventh, and, um, unfortunately, what you'll have to do now is you have to go before the ZBA and get the variance taken care of, so that you can get a Hawkers Pedder's license there.
Which really negates why we came to begin with, because now we're going to have to pay another thirty-five dollars plus a filing fee, it's just easier just to do it the way we've been doing it.
I was just curious, it's kind of an odd situation, I guess, but it's funny that the store can't have a Hawker Pedder's license in front of its, he could go somewhere else and do it, but in front of, could someone else come in front of my...
No, no one could come, that area is a residential zone area, and, John, you probably know it better than me, but, so you can't, you have to get a, what, what's the kind of variance they call it?
It's a variance.
Unusual, no, a...
Not, not necess, the problem is, is that you're, you're actually a non-conforming use.
Right, right, right.
So, because you don't conform to the zone, because you're in the residential zone, but it pre-existed the residential zone being created, because the store was there for years. The problem you run into is that, being it's a non-conformity, it's an expansion of that non-conformity, which puts you in potentially, not necessarily a variance situation, could, depending on the setbacks or things, but it could put you in a, a situation where it's an intensification of the existing non-conforming use, or maybe it's not. The, the reason, and, and that's when I saw Neil's letter, Neil Duggan, that's the zoning enforcement officer, what he's saying is, is that, and you hit the, the nail on the head, Mr. Newsom, that's true, um, if you put that Hawkers Peddlers license, or, or your, um, trailer in front of your store, in essence, you are actually morphing out the store, even though it may not be attached to it or not.
We didn't want to put it there, we didn't, we didn't have a location in town.
Right. And I realize, and I think that's, we were trying to...
We, I think, all put our heads together and came up with that inadvertently.
We thought, wow, we're helping you out, trying to see if we could make it better.
Exactly.
What we failed to do was kind of look at it from a, uh, a zoning perspective, and that's, that's the problem we run into, if this were the business district, no problem, not a problem at all, but because it's in the residential district, it is a po, a problem, because now, there is a, a pre-existing use of store, selling things, uh, and then by adding that on, you're extending it, that's, that's what's going on. So, Neil's saying you can't, in order to do that, you have to go to the zoning, nobody in zoning is saying that that's a no, but, obviously, it could be a, a possibility too. So, from our perspective, we can't give you the Hawker Pedder's license to sell there, okay? And I think that's kind of a way that we're looking to rescind, pull back, if you will, the Hawkers Peddlers license to sell in front of your store.
We want to be in compliance, our, our intention is not to have a problem.
It certainly, it wasn't your fault, it's our fault, you know, we, we shouldn't, like, like John just said, we didn't look at it from that perspective, and...
Well, I don't think any of us did, at that point, we were just, because we, we originally had wanted to go to the ball field, and, um, then, there were other Hawker Peddlers that had already been issued licenses for Cole Parkway, for this, for that, and it really didn't matter to us, as I explained, it was an economical thing for us, instead of paying thirty-five dollars for each event, we could pay a seventy-dollar fee for a one-time inspection.
Right.
And now it's just going to cost us more, so, it, it's a little irony here.
I think what our master plan is, and I know that, that the town administrator and Kim Donovan are working on trying to, I mean, the Hawker Pedder's license has really grown and morphed into this big thing in the town.
Well, I think it's going to be a, a real issue because of Food Truck Nation.
Well, we're, we are going to, you know, try and get ahead of the curve, and, you know, we've, we've issued all the licenses that, one second, we've issued all the licenses that we're going to this year, and, you know, by the time we roll around to next year, we're going to have our induction order, we're going to be organized, and we're going to know what we're going to allow, and where we're going to allow them, is our plan, right, Trish?
Well, she's, the, Kim and Trish are doing a great job with their research, and, you know, kudos to them, and...
And I think the other thing that certainly, you know, from my perspective, and, um, I can't speak for the rest of the board members, but I think, you know, um, when we implement the new, I say plan, schedule for next year with Hawker Peddlers, uh, my preference is, obviously, to people who live in town, people who have businesses in town, to try to help, so...
This is our thirtieth year.
And it's one of those things where, I said this like four years ago, when some, somebody's trying to sell hot dogs out of Hanover, I'm like, you gotta give preference, of course, I don't think that was the only one, but anyway, my point is, is that, you know, when, when people come up, it's going to be put out there, you'll know about it, and, um, so, you know, people should line up, come in, and we'll discuss it, you know?
No, I think it's a great thing, I think, uh, but I just...
That's the only reason why we're looking at it.
Right now, it's a little, it's a little ups, it's a little upside down right now for the people that work in Cituit, live in Cituit, have businesses here.
Right.
It's not in our favor to be here.
We're trying to, we're trying to focus on it not to, I think what, what the intent initially was, that people were looking to try to make some money, and we, of course, said sure, why not?
Right.
And it's mushroomed, and, and...
They're not a service.
And, and so, we looked at both of those things, and now it's gotten to the point where a lot of people got involved.
It's not, it's not just Cituit, it's every shore community, and the, in the peak sales months, of course, are May through October.
Right.
And that's, the people that are here year-round kind of get...
Right.
A smack in the face at that point, so...
I think this year's proven that it's maybe boomeranged and hurt the businesses, these Hawker Pedler licenses, so we need to look at that, because that's the one thing that we don't want to do, but, that's neither here nor there for purposes of, the reason why we're saying we had to pull it back was because we gave it in error.
Okay, so I guess it's nothing that we did.
No, 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 that, that's the only reason.
Because our, our intention is to be in full compliance.
You can, obviously, we're not saying no, go forward with the zoning file. You can, obviously, we're not saying no. Go forward with the zoning file and application to see if you can expand that non-conforming use to do it, and you're, you're free to do it.
It's only, it's only till October at this point, so...
So that's the only reason why.
Sean?
My question is, if we rescind this, is this gonna have any effect on what you might or might not do at Heritage Days? I know you guys have a, you know, some type of...
No, we can still do Heritage Days. That's not a problem. We can go anyplace but in front of the store. In town, that's what...
No, I know that, but by, if we rescind this...
Yeah, is that...
Rescinding a Hawker Peddler's, not the mobile, or...
I, I mean, and, and I don't want to do something that's gonna hurt you. That, that's, I don't think we want to rescind this.
They're able to do it for outside the store and for special events, and what we're rescinding is the outside of the store.
All right, all right, good.
So the special event is not gonna be impacted by it.
Good.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Do we have the...
Yeah.
I liked that letter that we got yesterday, too. That was very nice.
So, special events, right. John's right. It says... So why don't, you make a motion, so you can...
I'll say that the Board of Selectmen are moved to grant a Hawker Peddlers license or to maintain, let's put it this way, that the Board of Selectmen will only rescind that portion of the Hawker Peddlers license issued on June seventh, two thousand and eleven, with respect to the... Applicants cannot sell in front of their store located at sixty-seven Captain Pierce Road.
Second.
Thank you.
Did you get that? Okay.
And Trish, it's fine to do it that way, just to take out that piece of it?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One question. So that means that we can go and have the inspection for Hawker Peddlers? We just can't use it in front of the store? So we do have a Hawker Peddlers...
For special events.
For special events. That's perfect.
Just for special events.
Thank you.
And again, reiterate, you did nothing to cause this. It was, it was our error, and we'll look into that in the future when we do give out these licenses.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I do have one other question. I don't know if this is a venue for it, but how can I get a, for the future, a defined use of that property, but, because it's been, in the past, it's been controversial where we can put trees, Christmas trees, or, or tables out front, and this is all stuff that's been going on since the thirties, as far as I know. So what, what is the, but, where do I find it? What is the actual rule here? Is everything is supposed to be confined inside the store? Is we decide to sell, I don't know, model rockets out on the side? Yeah, I can understand that. But we have, there's been uses that the store has been doing for the last hundred years, and...
So...
How do I get a definition of what we are, you know?
Expansion of non-conforming.
I, I don't fully understand the expansion thing. How, it seems to be open to...
Sure, sure, no. I, I would, I would probably say you have to contact probably an attorney, number one. Because the attorney would have to do the research to determine, over the course of years, what has been sold or what's been identified in the town for what the purposes of that location has been.
Right.
And then from there, you know, obviously, it's, it's a store, convenience store, for a number of years, and what does typically convenience mean? Now, if you end up saying, guess what, I'm gonna start selling Oriental rugs off the store, well, that's not a convenience and probably doesn't fall into it. It's a sale of an item, but it probably doesn't fit into the parameters of it.
Right, right.
If you say, I'm gonna start selling...
It could be dictated what happens inside the store also. I mean, we seem to see it as a general store, as a, you know, since it's been that, that...
But if it gets to something beyond the pale, I mean, and if it's in the gray area, well, that's when you get into trying to, shall we say, get interpretations. But if it's the black and white, different things, you know, like, I'm gonna sell cinder blocks, well, no, you can't.
Right, right, right.
On the other hand, if you're saying, yeah, I'm selling sandwiches, or I'm selling, you know, you know...
But John, I think they're asking also about the extent of the property line, to sell not necessarily in the store, but outside of the store. Is that a zoning issue, like on the sidewalk? And so, again, when you're...
Not necessarily on the sidewalk, but if, if the building, and that's what you're dealing with, you're dealing with the envelope of the building, okay, and what's, you say Christmas trees, okay, so that may be an extension. But if you end up saying, okay, I'm putting now, not only putting Christmas trees on a seasonal, now I'm gonna be putting, I start using that space, it's, it's kind of like a creep. You know, like, a classic example would be, you have a restaurant, and then all of a sudden, you say, I'm gonna put some tables outside. Then the tables turn into an awning, and then the awning says, gee, we want to continue to expand it. We're gonna close that off for three seasons. Then you get into the fourth area, which is, I want to just cover it all up. Now the building's expanded.
Right, right.
So, I mean, it's, it's kind of like a, a sense of what is creep, if you will, how things are moving along.
Pre-existing thing, it's...
So if you're selling little things, you know, trees or plants or something, but if all of a sudden, it begin to morph into a whole plant stand, a, a plant farm, you know, it may or may not fit within the confines. That's why I say you have to consult the law.
The store has done that for years.
If that were the case, then, you know, then you'd have the argument of saying, well, the store's been doing that. So it's not creep.
Okay, well, that's what we're...
I'm gonna stop here before you have to build them.
It's such, it's kind of gray, so we really, you know, I guess that's the issue, is we just need to...
So zoning is gonna deal with the proximity, and your attorney will talk with the contractor. Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Moving on to number nine, which is a vote discussion on the Ellis House license agreement. Aye?
Good evening, Janet.
Janet, are you?
Janet Granaccio.
It's okay. And just your address.
I'm at Thirty Pheasant Hill. And I'm here with the license agreement, which we worked on with John and Trish and our attorney, Dan McKinnon. And the only question I have, as Trish and I have been back and forth, is what happened with the maintenance repair on item D? Did we add in the bit about snow removal and clarify that? Other than that...
Item D? In what number?
Three, maintenance, repair and cleaning, page three, item D. Because we had a, Trish and I had a couple of emails back and forth, and I C-C'd it to you this afternoon, John. Because we had a group...
Hold on one second, Janet. Let me just say, let me just, so people understand, this is a license agreement. This is with the Situate Art Association, and I'm not sure the exact, I think it was nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five at town meeting, it was determined by the town to, shall we say, sell, or in essence, I don't want to say donate, but...
Do you know...
Give, provide to the Situate Art Association the Ellis property, and the Ellis property's off of Country Way. So if you go up Country Way, it's, it's off on the left-hand side. Unfortunately, during that time period, it was never conveyed, and so the Situate Art Association has been up there for the past almost twenty years, and consequently, you know, Trish came in and it was determined that, you know, they didn't have ownership, the town still owned it, so we needed to make sure that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's and made sure that there was some formal agreement between the town and the Situate Art Association, which necessitated a discussion about a license, if you will, to, for the Situate Art Association to continue to, shall we say, occupy the property. So, since then, we've kind of looked at different things, and of course, if you go up there, the art association's done wonderful things. We're trying to re, restore the building and make it look nicer on their own dime, not the town's. There are trails up there, there are a lot of artists who paint, and you see their wares down on Front Street. But in the meantime, we put together both the town attorney, town council, as well as their attorney, basically a license agreement. For those people who don't know, it's kind of like a lease, but it's a license. It's a big difference. So this is a license between the town and the Situate Art Association for a term of one year with renewal prospects after the term of the first year.
I think it was actually two years that we knew, but...
Janet, hold on. Okay. There is a renewal provision that after, if there's no default, if you will, that there is a renewal for another two years, and so on. So Ms. Granaccio is asking about maintenance, and that's one of the sub-paragraphs, or paragraph three, about maintenance of the access road, because the town does plow the road up to a point, and there's a parking lot. And the town under this is responsible, it's town-owned property, to do the plowing up to that point. But it's the responsibility of the association, and my understanding is to take it from that point, just to plow. If there are any problems with the road repair, the town will undertake that with the...
It's a reverse we agreed on. We've been maintaining the road, and the town had agreed that they would plow the bottom lot, which is the access for the walkers.
Yep.
And then they would, every time when a storm was ended, when they were doing the tertiary roads, they would plow up to the house with the, because that's town-owned, and essentially, it didn't cost them anything, you know?
And that's what D said, that's what D states.
That's, that's, I just want to be clear that that's what we understand, that, that what will happen, that the... Because that would, we've been able to figure out a way to maintain the road, but plowing the road requires having a snowplow. Maintaining the road, we've been able to do by, basically, we've been draining it. We've been setting it up so it has channels.
Subpart D does have.
Yeah, okay.
I think that satisfies the needs that you're looking for.
Okay, all right. If we're all on the same page.
So it reads, it reads the way that you just stated, so...
I don't have that copy. I guess you guys got it.
Well, why don't we just read, I'll just read it very quickly. Maintain, provision D says, maintain the access road to the premises. The town of Situate will be responsible for the lower lot in its regular sweep of the suites for snow removal, and will clear the roadway to the estate as time prevents in the final phases of storm cleanup. Maintenance of the access road by the association shall not include any responsibility for water runoff from the access road to the countryway or otherwise.
Perfect. That was the one thing that we were back and forth on, and I haven't seen it, so that's what I was asking for.
Great. You can have this copy if you'd like.
It's just the original language you sent. Cool. That, that works.
And the term, as John said, goes from July now till July of two thousand and thirteen.
And our idea is to work on eventually setting up a more formal lease agreement. This is to give us the time to do that.
Right, and it will, it's renewable as well, as John mentioned. Sean, any questions?
Just, just a comment. I, you know, I think they probably deserve a little more credit than maybe what John said. I was up there the other day, and the gravel road going up to the Ellis Estate is as smooth as Hadley Road in its gravel. I couldn't believe it. Then when I get up there, the painting project you have going on is terrific. It's, it's, it's coming along very good, and, you know, I, I don't know how we could do it ourselves. We have, you know, plenty of buildings now. An old wooden building like that is just, it's a lot of work.
Our next budget item is to replace some of the clovereds in front, because they're so old they can't be painted.
Right.
So we're gonna be doing that in sections, and I'm going to be talking to the CPC. We have that updated preservation plan is ongoing, which was funded by the CPC in the spring meeting. And I'm, you know what we were doing, where we've got furnace number two is about to die, so we're gonna try and get grant from the Mass Arts Council, partial funding from the CPC, and then some of our own funding, and put the three together and upgrade the heating system, the second one for the apartment.
While we're on that note, I just mentioned to Trish, there's only three of us. I've, you know, if you guys don't have a problem with me voting on it, I've brought oil and service up there, so I think we have to, I'll have to vote. I don't see a problem with it, so, just wanted to mention that.
Thanks for...
Any other questions for, for me?
No.
Thank you for answering mine.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute the license agreement between the town of Situate and the Situate Art Association, Inc.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Trish and John, thank both of you for really taking, you know, not a potential risky situation and really tightening it up and making sure that everyone was clear with what their responsibilities were.
Yes.
So...
Yes, I agree.
Thank you very much.
We did have a lease in between, by the way. It went dead somewhere in the early part of this, this decade, but it wasn't completely without some controls.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you, John.
Moving on to item number ten, which is discussion of FY-ten audit and management letter and FY-eleven through thirteen management, audit, bid and award. We've read, I don't know, Trish or Mary, who wants to comment on this? We've been given documentation, we've been given the audit report, and, and looked at them both. Are there any details that you'd like to go over?
Yes, I don't know. Historically, the town's really taken time to agenda to look at the management letter. Many communities have not finalized the process with the auditor actually coming in on the board phone and voting, etc., but since we haven't had that in the past, it's a great, good initial step. This is the audit for FY-ten, so it's actually the period July one, two thousand and nine, to June thirtieth, two thousand and ten. So it's not the one that just ended, so we're looking back thirteen months now. But I think it's a particularly helpful management letter, and also one that is marked improvement over some of the previous management letters. And Mary and Jane are here, and they have a lot of the credit to be commended for, for a number of the improvements that are really noted throughout the letter. I mean, by its nature, an auditor is an objective third party that is looking for things the town is doing wrong. That's the purpose of an audit. So the fact that this is so strong on the town side, I think, is, is really helpful. I think it talks about a lot of things that we've been talking about the last few years, and starting to make progress, and the other post-employment benefits, as far as the unfunded liability that we did at this town meeting, regionalization efforts that we've been talking about. We're very good with compliance with the new ethics law. We've also done some improvements in personnel compliance, but that is one of the deficiencies noted that we've talked about as far as not having a centralized H-R function. The improvement in the procurement has been noted, noted, as well as compliance with GAZB reporting requirements and the internal controls for cash receipts. And again, those are directly attributable to Mary and Jane's efforts. So there's a lot in this audit, and I hope that you can read it, because I'm pretty pleased with it, but we still have a lot to do. It talks about the town's reserves position and how that impacts the bond rating, which we went through last year and are gonna go through again next year. So it says ten percent of our stabilization and ten percent of our overall reserves, this should be the ultimate goal. We're at seven percent right now, but in my view, that's pretty darn good, given what we've just come through and still may be facing. So I just wanted to share that with you, and we can answer any additional questions you might have.
No, I, I read it, and I, I agree, there is much, much more positive here. It talks about all the improvements we've made. It talks about how well financially we're being run as a town, and how our free cash and our numbers look, look strong, particularly given the current economic condition that we're all dealing with. And it does give feedback for areas of employment, like you mentioned, the human resource function and some internal audit-type stuff. But it's always, they always seem to be based on something that we've already taken a step in that direction, and they just think we need to proceed with that. And again, it's much, much more positive. There's some stuff with the school that I'm sure you've, you've spoken to them about in terms of, you know, some accounting and taking care of encumbrances and some cash transactions that can always be tightened up a little bit, but I'm sure every community's dealing with that sort of stuff. But overall, it was a, a very positive document that I, I thought. And as Trish just mentioned, this is fiscal year two thousand and ten. We just finished two thousand and eleven, so a lot of these things have already been dealt with in the upcoming year that just ended. So hopefully, we'll see the continuing improvements in the, in the appointment letter, so. Any comments?
No.
I mean, and I think at some point in time, you know, the board can discuss whether we should actually get the accountant in here and in public forum and discuss their recommendations in public, as opposed to us just going over it in more of a summary format. Mary or Jane, any comments or any thoughts? I think you should both be very proud of, of the document that we have in front of us, and, you know, and continue to work on some of those areas. Obviously, some of them, you know, the unfunded liabilities, tough to catch up on, on fifty years' worth of neglect in one year, but at least we're taking steps in that direction, and that's well noted. Great. So do we need, is there a motion? Oh, no, the motion would be in the second portion, right?
So let me address that. This is another one in the never-ending contracts I have voided, because they were not properly executed. So your auditing contract was actually a three-year auditing contract with optional five years to renew.
And they never caught it.
You didn't adopt that bylaw until fall of two thousand and nine, so therefore, they just served out the three years, which is what the town was able to award, and we went out to bid in June to do a new term. That being said, we also increased the FY-twelve budget specifically for the audit. And as you can see in my material that I presented to you, I am recommending that we change audit terms. It is not a reflection on the current auditor that we've had for the past year, few years, however, it's very important to not get too comfy with the auditor and have a new set of eyes come in, an objective third party. The easy thing for us to do would be to continue to have the same auditor that knows us. But we want to challenge ourselves as far as our internal controls. With the increased budget, we're able, as this FY-ten audit noted, that because of the bid price, the scope of their ability to do test audits and internal controls in various departments limited us to one department a year, and it wasn't the transfer station. I get to pick it in consultation with Mary. This new audit will allow additional testing to be done. Powers and Sullivan, who is the recommended auditing firm, is pretty well-known in Massachusetts and one of the other reasons I'm recommending them is we should always aspire to be better than we are. And we, all communities have benchmarked communities that they compare themselves with. And Powers and Sullivan is currently serving a number of the communities that I believe we should be benchmarking with in terms of their management letter recommendations around organizational array of departments, internal controls, staffing needs and things like that. So it's, it's an increase of nine thousand dollars, I think, but when that, I think, will be well spent and they're ready to get going because this will be the FY-eleven audit now that just ended June thirtieth. And Maria, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that?
No, and you know, since it's my financials that are being audited, I, I don't think I really should be picking the fur, I'm happy to have a choice, I mean, to have, you know, an opinion. Powers and Sullivan has got my recommendations spoken at our association meetings.
How, a couple of quick questions. How long have we been with the current?
Six years.
So six years, two, three-year contract. And how many did we talk to?
We have received five bids.
Three others?
Yeah.
So five total, the current one, this one and three others. And you were involved in that process as well?
Yep.
Yep?
She let, I, she did the RPI, reviewed it and approved it. She accepted the bids and then I determined who would go with that for consultation with you.
Jane, any, any comments from you?
No, I, I think it's also a good idea to change audit forms. I have no complaints about the one that's been a pleasure to deal with and they've done thorough testing in my office, obviously because I'm a project collector. But yeah, I'm not to the challenge, but who said bye?
Sean? Just two quick questions. Have any of you girls used this firm before? No?
I've seen it in conferences.
Okay.
I've seen it in conferences and I asked mother accountants and they have a good one.
They did the City of Springfield while I was there, but Mary asked, when she asked them, they didn't know. I didn't deal with them directly and they didn't quite know who I was. But, that's good, but they were in Springfield, I think, the last year before I left.
And we're, this is a three-year contract, I mean, it's not huge, but what if you, you know, really found something you didn't like after the first, we can opt out after the first?
I think it's at least for one year where you can extend it for...
Right.
Okay, great.
Right, and then we can do that for another two years, so as many as five because we accepted that bylaw now that says you can execute up to five years. So if we like them, we can keep this applied.
No? Great. And again, reiterate, and I'm just going to read a paragraph here, you know, that we commend the prior firm for the great work that they've done. That was limited in terms of the budget and what they could do, but they did a great job and really, this is being made based on just fiduciary responsibility of, you know, getting a new set of eyes in here and really maybe getting a view from a different angle and getting feedback from a different group of people. But they certainly did a great job and, and obviously, the due diligence in, in the process of selecting these people seems to be done thoroughly, so. Any comments?
No?
A motion?
Sure. Move that the Board of Sclakman vote to award the contract for audit services to Powers and Sullivan for a contract price of thirty-nine thousand dollars for fiscal year eleven, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
Hold on. Thirty-nine thousand for fiscal year two thousand and twelve and thirty-nine thousand for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen with an option to renew for two additional years at the town's sole option.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous? Thank you guys for all the, all the work on that item. Okay, item number eleven. The discussion of the town meeting schedule.
I asked Sheila to put this on the agenda for planning purposes and I did send you a brief email earlier today, just for planning purposes. It's really good since we have such a long lead time for town meetings under the charter. And even though it's August, October's not that far away and as, in terms of proper notification to various boards and committees and the residents at large, I just wanted to chat with you about what we're looking at and to, not necessarily have you set and vote tonight what the date for town meeting is, but what I'm recommending to you so that we can plan in that vein. And after speaking with the town clerk and, and also being communication with the moderator, it looks like the week of October twenty-fourth is going to be the best week. And as I mentioned in my email, we don't have a lot of wiggle room with the special town meeting in the fall because our free cash is usually certified in September and we have to set the tax rate in November. And so you can't spend free cash till it's certified and you can't issue a tax bill till you have the tax rate and you know all your obligations. So October is really the month that makes the most sense and we all, we have Columbus Day in there and stuff, so I really want us, barring any unforeseen concerns on the part of the board, to plan for that week of October twenty-fourth, either the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. You can do any day of the week now because we changed the bylaw. So I just want to know if you had any concerns about that.
Well, I think it's important to note that we need to have one and that there are topics that will be on there. We'll, we'll discuss them obviously as they, as they come up. And also for people that wanted to get items on it, that that's the timeframe that they have to, to think about, end of October, so articles have to be...
We'll have Kim or Sheila send something out so folks know the deadline and I'll establish that deadline and it will go out in the website in a web last and I'm sure the news folks will report on it as well. But it will be sometime in September.
Right.
So, September for an October meeting?
Yes, but we need to have the, any petition articles or anything like that. And Planning Board, I know, is looking at two articles, so they, they have to do their window back too.
Good. Good, I don't think there's a vote needed, but thanks for the information and it comes, it comes up quickly, so if you don't start discussing it now, it's here before you know it. Great, so let's move on to item number twelve, which is the appointments.
I'll move to appoint Scott Thomas to the Renewable Energy Committee.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous?
Move...
Scott, thank you.
I'll move Maureen Kahlberg to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, Maureen.
I'll move Elizabeth Cranston to the Cituit Cultural Council.
Second.
Just lost an oil customer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much for getting involved.
Thank you.
I'd also move Ruth Wagner to the Seawall Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous?
And I'd move Rosemary Dobie to the Grants Elevation Committee.
Second as well?
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous?
Finally, I'll move Doris Querry to the Grants Elevation Committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you to the three of you for participating as well. Without the participants, the town's committees don't work, so we really appreciate it. Moving on to number thirteen, the Town Administrator's Report.
Town Administrator has a very brief report, but I did just want to publicly comment on the situation at the south end of Gannett Row, Minut Beach, as far as the ramp. The ramp will be closed for the rest of the summer and we are working on options for next year, but as the board knows, there was an unsafe condition that developed as a result of some of the rocks moving. And after sort of band-aiding a few solutions and trying a few solutions that didn't work, in the interest of public safety, we closed the ramp. So the northern access is available through the stairs, but that, that access will not, not be open and was officially posted and, and closed last Friday afternoon. So I'm happy to answer any of the questions you might have, but I think you pretty much are aware of what's been happening there the last three weeks as we've been monitoring and on a daily basis.
And just to add, there was actually an injury there as well after...
There was an injury there, even with the lifeguards there at high tide.
So what happens, for those of you watching, the sidewalk or whatever you call the ramp that comes down, there's a gap between that and the rocks that people have been stepping on, so at high tide, you can't see that and it becomes a very dangerous situation. There's a photograph here where you kind of fall down and there's a rock that's pinning your leg there and the tide can push you around and cause damage. And they tried to fix it by moving the rocks and as we all know, the ocean keeps pushing it back to where it wants to. So we've tried it a couple of times, this is where it is. We've posted lifeguards there around the clock and, and we still have injuries there. So it's just been deemed an unsafe situation and that has to be closed, not indefinitely, but for the rest of the summer. And I know DPW will be working on how to get another entrance into that portion of the beach that will be safer. Anything to add? Nope? Great, so it's unfortunate, but it is the right thing to do. Anything else? Great, so let's move on to other business. Number fourteen.
No, nothing tonight, Tony?
Nothing tonight? John?
Just three things. One is I just wanted to commend the parks, I guess you could say, the Department of Public Works and in particular, the grounds, they're doing a great job, you know, taking care of the fields, both the baseball fields, the commons and, you know, just getting out and taking care of it. I think, I want to commend them. They don't get too much acknowledgement, but they should because when you drive around, they look, the town's property looks really nice. The second thing I wanted to say is, you know, I am amazed at the Recreation Department, my kids are in it, I'm like, that place is hopping over at the high school. And I have to say, the Recreation Commission and the Recreation Department are doing a phenomenal job with all the kids and the potential securities and the problems that could go on between our beaches and between the events and between the boating and between everything else. It's, it's phenomenal what this town has to offer and I commend them for...
I've been telling the guys that for years, since I've been with you.
I was just amazed driving away saying, look at all these cars, the kids, the parents, it's, it's, I don't know too many communities that have, have that to offer and we do and we are so fortunate, so kudos to them. The last thing is Heritage Days. You know, don't forget, this Friday is Luminaire, so go on out to the harbor, go out to the coastline, it should be very pretty. If you're fortunate enough to have a boat, then you should take it out and take a look at it. It's a great event. Heritage Days is, is great for the town, it's heritage. Downtown, Front Street, there are going to be not only just music and the vendors, but there are also other events with respect to boating and all around the town. So pick up the flyers and go out there and enjoy it. And that's it.
Great. Thanks, John. Couple other quick things to add. As we were commending DPW, also like to commend the lifeguards. We've gotten a couple of emails lately of some, some great jobs that they've done out there. So kudos to them and, and thank you for taking care of our beaches. John touched on baseball. There's a lot of baseball being played. I know your son's playing, I know my kids are playing. And, you know, thanks to all the coaches, all the Cituit teams are doing great. In fact, one of them's playing in the championship game tonight and one of them played in a tournament out in Pittsfield last week and did well and, you know, so if you're looking for some good, cheap entertainment, just walk to a ball field. They're all in the playoffs right now and, and it's a good, good entertainment. And I see Scott sitting out there still, football's right on the corner as well, so that'll be happening quickly. And then just reiterate, the Heritage Days, you know, John is doing a lot with this with the chamber and the opening ceremonies are Saturday morning at nine o'clock down by the movie theater where the whole thing gets kicked off. But as John mentioned, the Luminaire is really the start of it on Friday night where there will be candles along the whole coast of the town. And then the historical sites will be open to the public as well as the music down on Front Street and all the vendors and all the, you know, kids, kids activities and stuff that are going on there. So come out, enjoy it, learn about the heritage of the town and, and have a good time. Ms. Rubine?
Anne Rubine, Tiff and Chris Rowe. Just a reminder, there will be virtually no parking in Harbor. There will be shuttle service from the Green Bush Tea Station and we encourage people to use it, please, because the harbor fills up very, very quickly. There will be parking, free parking at the Green Bush Tea Station with two shuttle buses to Harbor.
Great, thank you. So again, reiterate, Tea Station in Green Bush shuttles back and forth to the harbor